Crisis departed. So for the recording purposes, we just opened the meeting and did the pledge of allegiance and accepted the minutes. For now, my superintendent's report. Just really quickly, we're Board Clerk, Mrs. Legault. Do we have a public comment section at any point?
We don't, because I was supposed to add that, and I forgot to add that. So I apologize.
Okay, Andrea, will you do a motion to do a public comment before I do the superintendent's meeting, superintendent's report?
Sure. Motion to add a public comment to tonight's agenda.
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Ryan, I sent you the public comments from Ms. Wilmot. Would you like me to read it, or would you like to read it?
Do you mind reading it?
No. Ms. Mary Wilmot submitted a question for public comment. Her question is, will prom scheduled for May 29th or graduation be canceled? She had a two-part, second part of her question is, will kids be prepared for Regent's exams after being home so long? Would you like me to respond, Andrea?
Yes, please. Thanks.
Okay. So, Mary, I've had this question several times, and it's obviously a really big concern with our extended closure. My philosophy is that these are milestones in our children's lives. If we go beyond the scheduled dates of prom and graduation, I will do everything in my power to make sure that the children, the seniors, and juniors will still have this experience. So, as you know, the governor is making determinations in two-week increments. If he continues in these two-week increments and we miss prom, I've already spoken to the advisors about finding an alternative date, even if we have to go into the summer, as well as the graduation ceremony. So I'm prepared to do whatever it takes to make sure that these events still happen for our children. As for being prepared for Regent's exams, and I'll talk about it more in my board report, Regent's level course teachers are beginning to move forward with content, and I'll talk more about that in a little bit in my board report. But the Board of Regents is going to make a decision about Regent's exams as early as Monday or Tuesday of next week. They have a Board of Regents meeting with the chancellor and interim commissioner, and so we should know more by mid to late week next week. So please stay tuned. As you know, I try to be as transparent with communication, and as soon as I know, I will let my, and know for sure, I will let my families know. Board members, do you have any other comments on Mary's question?
No, I wanted to thank Mary for those questions. We're all concerned about this as well. I want to just make a couple of comments, both acknowledging the extraordinary circumstances that our entire community has found themselves in this year. It's been a very interesting year, a hard year in a lot of ways, and I want to thank the kids for sticking it out and making do with such challenging times. It breaks my heart to think about seniors and juniors missing their last year or two. And also our teachers who, I'm just very appreciative, I think I can speak for the whole board, about how quickly they pulled together this distance learning model and just have really gone above and beyond in this crisis, but also this whole school year as we've had a number of challenges. And then, of course, the leadership from our administration. What a first-year Kim and her team, they've worked so hard, and we're just really appreciative, and we want to recognize all those efforts. So, thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, Andrea. And thank you for your support and the Board of Ed's support. For my board meeting, board meeting updates, I've got a few things that I just want to talk about, and I'm going to attempt to share some things with you, just so that you can see it, and then our folks at home can see it as well in the live stream. I want to give, well, first, I need to give a huge shout-out to Mr. Miller, Mr. Farrakane, and Mr. Growley for making this happen. I have never felt older in my life, especially my technology deficiencies. So thank you to all three of you, going above and beyond. Poor Mr. Miller is, I've been calling on him on all hours of the night, and he is doing a great job, and Mr. Growley with his immense knowledge base with Google and live streaming and all those things, so and the YouTube channel. So, thank you. The next shout-out I'd like to give is to our teachers. I have never met a more professional and dedicated group of teachers in the four districts I've worked with. These are unusual times, and right from the union leadership to the teachers themselves, they really stepped up to the plate, and they've worked really, really hard. They've adapted, or they're adapting. In fact, we have to, as an administrative team, tell them several times, cut yourself a break, it's okay. So I'm just incredibly proud to be part of this Heatley family. So we've got this, and we'll continue to work hard. So they deserve kudos. For more of the formal items on my report, I want to talk about Ms. DeZembo joined the Assistant Superintendents across the Capital Region BOCES, so 24-component districts, to work towards a common goal of regionally combining resources and to develop a website as a resource for teachers, and it's standard-based, so this remote learning. And the districts across the Capital Region acknowledged that our parents were frustrated, our students were frustrated, you know, and it started with combining resources, pulling some rock star teachers together, and the first step was creating an academic calendar, a structured calendar. But what I'd like to do is I'm going to share this document, if I can. All right. I know how to do this in Zoom. Present now. What am I going to present? None of my windows. Maybe I can't. I put it, I had Ms. Legault put it in your packet. Doing present now, and I want to open one of my tabs. So, are we doing entire screen or window? Entire screen? Okay. We're going to try it. We're going to see how this works. Can you guys see my screen? Awesome. All right, so we're going to go over here. Working, collaborating with the 24-component districts. Oh, good. With the 24-component districts, as well as Capital Region BOCES Communications. Tiffany did a phenomenal job. She has just really risen to this occasion. They created this folder that's on our website, and it's talking about what learning at home is going to look like during COVID-19. And it talks about, you know, participation and this flexible scheduling. So we're introducing a flexible scheduling for what grades, K-2, 3, 5, 6, 8, and 9, 12, what they should be spending doing academics during the school day. We had so many parents share that their children were stuck in front of a computer from 8:00 in the morning until 3:00 o'clock, and that's not flexible scheduling. So within that, Tiffany pushed out to the principals and the teachers this academic calendar, and which it structures, structures these flexible scheduling. So we talk about content and resources to the students and the teachers, and how we are, continue to communicate with families and the students themselves. During this time, grading is going to look a little different. It's not going to be the traditional grading, numerical grading. As they push out new content, teachers will know if a student has either a super complete or incomplete, meaning, did the child learn the standard and master the standard, or are they incomplete with that? So this flyer is on the website. With that being said, I keep in my daily logs with families as I have been reminding them to look at our website. I know parents prefer Facebook, but our at-home resources, emergency resources can be found on our website. So within the website, we have learning resources that Tiffany has been building with Jeff. Here's the flyers included. And then Ms. DeZembo, I'm so proud of her. She created our first video.
Hello. My name's Tiffany DeZembo, and I'm the Director of Curriculum for the Green Island Indian Principal District. Today, I'd like to walk you through the instructional guidelines just a second.
So as you can see, Tiffany did a great job. This is obviously meant for parents to have a better understanding of what remote learning is, and it goes deeper than the flyer does. And I talked to Tiffany this morning. I had some parents reach out. They were very overwhelmed and frustrated with Google Classroom. I myself, I'm not an expert in it, so I can't imagine being thrust into it. So Tiffany's going to, she has willingly agreed to do a Facebook Live so that parents can watch, she can walk them through Google Classroom, and we purposely chose Google Facebook Live so that they can ask questions in real time. So we're going to hopefully set that up for Monday of next week, and I'm sure Tiffany will do it. So with that being said, the website is full of resources for families, including this new YouTube channel that Jeff and Mr. Growley set up so that the teachers can start posting, if I can find it, can start posting their videos, their hello videos and things like that. Let me go back here. It'd be kind of funny if I can click on the YouTube. I just got it here. All right. Well, I was going to see if I could figure out how to get to the YouTube channel, but I thought it was at the home resources. I'm sorry. Please be patient, I'm sorry. All right. So here is where the form that we had, and then here is the... Look at this. We've got a lot of layers going on here. So we're live streaming right now through the YouTube channel. All right, so I'm going to stop presenting. I mean, confusion will. All right, so we're back to normal. So Tiffany has really worked hard with her colleagues in the region to develop these resources for teachers to be able to grab, make and take lessons from them, as well as the technology end of remote learning. Tiffany, do you want to add anything about the work you've done with the Capital Region BOCES?
No, I think you did a great job of covering it all. It's a great group of people to work with, and I'm privileged to get to do that. So, thank you.
Proud of you. Proud of you. All right, so with that being said, a few other things with this remote learning. Principals have been having daily faculty meetings with their staff, checking in, answering questions. We have a full faculty staff on Mondays where I lead that, and then the admins team and I actually meet every day as well. I have a daily Capital Region Superintendent meeting, so usually I go to that meeting, and then I report out to them what's going on, what's, what we're hearing down the pike. Tiffany has our assistant, Chris has his business officials, so we're all intertwined, and everyone's doing a great job. I'm proud of the admin team because I know our teachers are exhausted. Somebody can mute their mic, that would be great. There we go. Doing a great job as administrative and leadership team, keeping people positive. Mr. McManus, is your microphone? Yeah, it is. Is that better, Andrea? Okay, good. Doing a great job being positive forces, helping teachers, supporting teachers. Along the same vein, we are still trying to get past the hurdles of technology for some of our students, as well as connectivity. The first couple of weeks of remote learning is this equity. And I'm not saying equity about, in the sense of everybody's equal with certain things, but equity with access, equity to devices. With that being said, I was allowed to resubmit part of our Smart School Investment Plan, our smart bond money, and Chris and I and Jeff and the tech team, we met, video conferenced, and then Chris and I sat down. We, you'll see that we kind of tweaked the PowerPoint presentation on the website and split it up into two phases. So I submitted the other day, Phase 1, which will be 200 Chromebooks, so we can cycle out a lot of our Chromebooks that are broken, as well as 36 laptops for teachers, because I actually have some teachers who are trying to create lessons on iPads. And I, and we also included 10 hotspots, because we have some families who have identified they have no Wi-Fi. And we actually have a teacher who has said that her Wi-Fi is awful, and doing a video conference with her the other day, I agree. So I emailed State Ed today, and she said it's all good on her end, and that they're doing a review, an emergency review in the next day or so. So hopefully by, if not tomorrow, early next week, and then we can come up with a plan on how to get, cycle out with Jeff and Mr. Farrakane, cycle out those devices and those hotspots. So you're going to see on the board agenda is a special ed handbook. It says drafts. The board does not have to approve it. It's not policy. It's a guidebook. As you know, when I started in July, I'm all about written procedures. I had State Ed review it, as well as some other experts in the field, and made corrections. And Ange, thank you, thank you, thank you. Because I've been so busy, I just handed her the packet, so can you make fix this? And she did a great job. We notified parents and staff that per the governor's mandate executive order that the continuity of learning will continue through April break, including Good Friday. So teachers have been wonderful. They understand that we'll figure this out with a 180-day calendar in their contract when we get to the other side. But they have to continue to provide instruction and touch base. It's business as usual all through spring break. And I have advised any staff that if they'd like to observe Good Friday as a religious holiday, that they may, and we can charge them, charge them a day. Just a reminder, April 22nd is the Board, the BOCES Board meeting, and we have a board meeting, but it's also a facilities meeting. CSARCH is supposed to come in and talk about the upcoming capital project. So just please remember, April 22nd is the Board, Ange, right, April 22nd? Yeah. Is the Board meeting to adopt the BOCES budget, and then we will have CSARCH in to look at planning for capital project. I'm not going to talk about budget, because Chris has got that covered. So, hi, Ella. Other than that, any questions from the board?
Nope. All's up for me.
Do we anticipate that the Smart Schools money is going to actually come through?
Yes.
We do.
Yes. They've had, they've had, they did one. So you have somebody you work with State Ed that reviews it, and it got kicked back in previous years because there was no security feature to it. And then it got kicked back and opened up again, just with the remote learning and with the security feature. And out of the school, the security, well, if you happen to have a project number. Don, can you mop, give your mic? Thank you. So when it got reopened, I didn't have a project number for the security piece. We know that we need new phones, IP phones in that security piece, that's a given. But to get a project number, you have to solicit through State Ed. It's a long process. So the representative who reviewed my application said, do it in two phases. The first phase, what you need to get through an extended closure. And she said, then I can go in and resubmit for the remaining items that we'd like to use the monies for. So as frustrating as it was, it got kicked back, I think, three times, and because there's certain pieces of it, but then Chris and I were able to fix it, and then it got kicked back again. And then it was some very simple tweaking, and then I emailed her. She goes, it looks good to me. I'm kicking it up to the next level at the emergency meeting, so I'm hopeful. I am hopeful. Don, do you have any questions?
Oh, I'm sorry. Just one more follow-up on that. And so my memory was that we were looking to do something with the Wi-Fi in the building with that money in the past. Is that still something we're going to do, or no?
A few years ago, I think it was 2017, 2018, the district redid all of the Wi-Fi structure, infrastructure, and the ports. There's 42, no, not ports, there, I forget what they're called. There are 42 ports that for Wi-Fi and the wiring and the server were all updated in 2018. We meet, we meet the criteria for that. And I know that because Chris had to find the plan, and it's an Aruba land, something, something, something or other, but so we're in good shape for that. Any other questions? Okay, that's all I got. Admins, if I've forgotten anything, let me know.
All right. Thank you very much, Kim. Okay, Business Manager, right. Next up, we have the Business Manager's report.
Hello, everyone. So State Aid Runs came out late yesterday afternoon, which, you know, led to a few text messages about some interesting numbers, but I don't want to frighten anybody. So the positive is the state budget didn't factor out any of the expense-driven aids into foundation aid. What that means is anything that we buy through BOCES, anything that we purchase in the year before the actual next aid run, we're still going to get aid on that, as of now. That was something the governor was looking to do, was move it into foundation aid. That's a positive. That didn't happen. One of the negatives from this is this COVID pandemic. Because of that, every district has a pandemic adjustment. And I can pull up the aid run here, but it gets a little confusing to look at. It's a lot of numbers. Basically, what it shows for our district is we saw a decrease of about $69,000 in aid. But in all honesty, I think that we made out probably pretty well compared to some other districts. Some are seeing hundreds of thousands, some millions. With that, though, they do, in going through my business meetings here, they have mentioned the federal stimulus coming in that for this year will replenish that amount, but I've been advised that I shouldn't count on that full amount coming in. We may see part of it. We may see none of it. So my reasoning for this is when I do my budget and look at revenues, I'm taking that $69,000 right out of revenues. I'd rather be understated than overstate, and then we expect it, and it doesn't show up. So with that, based on the aid run, and then on the rest of the revenues that we have, well, before I get to that, if you look at that aid run, it's going to look like it's about $3.564 million. What we have to do with that, though, is you have to factor out the UPK grant. It's on there as an aid. It's not an aid. It's a UPK grant. So that brings it down to about $3.436 million. So going over to the revenue side, when we are looking back at this, Kim and I, I saw a error with one of my spreadsheets for tax cap. So what we originally had planned was the 1.39 increase for the tax cap. It was a formula error. It came out to about 2.66. And I know everybody says, oh, it can't be above 2%. The cap can go above 2%. The 2% gets factored in. It either has to be the less of the growth rate factor for taxes, or 2%. We are under that. Our growth rate factor is 1.081. So we can go up to the 2.66%. However, Kim and I discussing it, don't think it's fiscally responsible right now to go over 2% for our tax levy for next year. So with that, I've tried to keep it at about 1.95%, and that's about $73,000 increase in taxes for 2021. All right, so if you factor that in with the other revenues that we have built in, we're looking at a total revenue of about $7.465 million. That's the revenue side. Now we have the expenditure side. So I've been working on trying to finish the expenditures. It's the hardest part to finish. You guys have seen the salary. You've seen the benefit increases. What we just worked on was BOCES services. And what you're going to see is, you're going to see a spike in what we spent 1920 to 2021. But with that, there's a couple reasons for it. One is the communications package that we want to implement here in the district, which I think is very important. That's a big chunk of that spike. You're also going to see that we have another instructional coach, something we also need in there. So that's the majority of that spike. And the difference between years is about $177,000 going from 1920 to 2021. But also remember that if we don't spend money on BOCES, or we don't spend money on transportation, or these expenses, we're not going to get that aid in revenue next year. So with that, factoring in those costs, as well as the salary and benefits, we do have a gap in our budget. The gap right now we're looking at is about $347,000. Now, before we, before we jump to any conclusions here, again, this is a preliminary budget run. I can't stress that enough. Every meeting that I've been in right now, every district is facing some type of gap in every single budget. All right. They've also advised us that we should not be having any budget adoption until the end of the month, which coincides with what our plan is. Our plan was, I believe, April 22nd was going to be the budget adoption. That coincides with everything that BOCES, all the other business officials are saying. So in the next few weeks, Kim and I are going to be working together and working with Mary, my mentor, on coming up with some creative ideas and trying to decrease that gap. We have a couple of options we're already thinking about that are back pocket. I'm not going to get into the ins and outs of it right now. But again, preliminary budget run, this is something that they have not faced before. So I don't want anybody to jump to conclusions here. Let us work on this for a few weeks, and we'll also report back on when we start to decrease this gap. Anybody have any questions?
Chris, really quick, we realized that there was an audio issue with the streaming. You don't have to repeat everything, but folks who may be streaming in just picked up the last few seconds. Can you just summarize really quickly of maybe just what our threshold is, and what does that mean for our preliminary gap that you and I are going to work through?
So the tax threshold we're looking at for next year is it's a 1.95% increase in the tax levy. It's about $73,000 increase from the year before. What that's going to do is when you factor that amount in with the amount from aid, it's going to bring the revenue side to about $7.4 million. Our expense side is higher than that right now. We have about a $347,000 gap between expenses and revenues. So in the next few weeks, Kim and I will be working together, coming up with ideas on how we can decrease that gap moving forward here, before we set up any type of budget adoption.
Thanks, Chris.
Not the best of news, but again, we're starting here and putting it all out there right now before we move any forward.
And this is not, I'm sorry, I was gonna say, this isn't unique to Green Island. Every district across the state is faced with the same challenges. And the big thing that Chris and I have heard over and over and over again is we don't know how expensive COVID is gonna be. And unfortunately, the districts across the state have to chip in to cover this cost. Is it worth human life? Absolutely, right? Everyone wants to do their part in making sure that, for human life. But that's why it's a big unknown moving forward.
Has there been, have either of you heard if there's been any talk about some type of relief or stimulus money that may come from the feds outside of the CARES Act? That's just designating money to states, and then it's up to the discretion of the state, whether that could...
They did. They did mention today, we had a rather long business official meeting today going over all of this. They did mention that there would be a few COVID grants that are gonna become available. They didn't go into much detail about it, just that they're gonna be out there. They did also mention, and Kim got a different take on this than I did about grants for next year. I was informed that title grants weren't gonna be touched, so we can still count on that money. I will find more clarification on that, if any of that's gonna change. Initially, I assumed that if your aid's going down, these grants are gonna go down as well. But that may not be the case. So like Kim said, there's a lot of still what-ifs. We only know what we know. And every day will get a little bit better here, and we're gonna have to tackle it daily.
Yeah.
I just want to mention that, as me being a new soup, and Chris fairly new to his position, that he has done an amazing job. He keeps me calm with everything that we've gone through, and especially in the last few weeks, he's like, other than my husband, the only other human being I see. And there's many times where he's looking at me and telling me to breathe. So I thank you, Chris, for that. And he's doing an amazing job. For, you know, when I walked in in July, because he was, you know, put into a position that didn't have years of experience, he's really stepped up and made an incredible difference for the district. So I'm honored to call you my partner in crime.
Thank you.
Good job, Chris.
Thanks.
Any other questions from the Board? So I imagine we'll just continue to get information as you learn more. And are we, so in the April meeting, I know we're adopting BOCs budget. When are we gonna be adopting our budget?
May 2nd.
It's the May meeting.
It's the May meeting, right, May 7th, May 7th, I think.
So we'll get an update on numbers in the April special meeting?
You have to adapt, don't you have to adapt the number at the April 22nd meeting, the budget amount?
Yeah.
Everything's shifting because of now that the budget vote is pushed to June 1st.
Okay.
Okay.
So we're waiting on, and I'm sure Board of Clerks will find out, to find out how it's gonna shift.
Okay.
Because it's days, right? It's days so many. And so when we know those dates, but I think that for Chris and I's sanity, we really want to have a firm, like, we can present to the Board April 22nd and say, here is the budget. We're not gonna vote on it, but here's the budget, and if something changes. But we'll, I'll update the Board when the timelines, they haven't given us definite timelines yet, but I should have probably said that my Board update that, because budget votes and budget elections have been pushed to June 1st. So that's gonna shift those other dates.
The other dates, okay.
Other than April 22nd is still the BOCs adoption.
Okay, and you said that the Board and budget vote is on June 1st right now?
Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. We are being asked to approve a number of actions noted on the agenda. Items 5.01 through 9.01.
Motion.
Second that motion.
Any comments, discussion on any of those items?
I just wanted to say for 8.01, for the spring sports suspended affected 3/20/2020. That is, right now, that's not canceled as of right now, correct?
No, I'm making the recommendation. I reached out to Mr. Ford. They got a weekend to practice, then we were closed for a week. And I had said to him, this is based on what other districts in the Capitol Region are doing. I said, you know, we're gonna suspend as of March 20th. We will retro pay the two weeks. If we come back and can have a season, I am more than willing to resume and give them the full stipend. But we don't know. Governor Cuomo does not want to declare any mandate or executive order outside of two weeks at a time. I would love that if we decided we came back, you know, in the beginning in May, and we can resume spring sport. So I'm fully comfortable saying, okay, if they have a spring season, then we'll pay them the full athletic stipend. Is that what you mean?
Yep, that was all I was, yep, I was just making sure that it wasn't canceled as of now, like right now.
Nope, the 20th, the 20th of March, just suspended. That's why I used the word suspended.
Yep, that's what I was making sure. All right, thank you.
Any other comments or discussion?
I'm all set.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, and then we'll note number 10.01, which is an informational item that the Board has received, the Best Practices Special Education Handbook. Kim, did you say that's not a draft? In fact, that's a final copy?
Yeah, that is a final copy. Before you end the meeting, Ange, I'm just looking, remember we talked about a Board Resolution on hourly employees?
It's on there. It was under the financials.
Oh, was it? Okay, perfect, perfect. And before you do close the meeting out, just for folks, if you were streaming and we lost the audio, we did record this meeting. As soon as Andrea agents the meeting, we will post it to the YouTube channel, so you can watch it then if you missed part of the audio. So apologies about that. Well, we're working it out as we go.
Okay, and we didn't receive any additional questions for a second public comment? Like through a chat?
Let me double-check really quick. No, not just the one from Ms. Womack. Okay?
So no executive session tonight, so if we can get a motion to adjourn?
Oh, you know what, before you adjourn? Do, since we lost audio, do you want me to answer Ms. Womack's question? Or do you, or just she can watch the recorded version?
Um, why don't we answer it again, just in case? That may make it easier for people.
Okay, I'm sorry, we're learning, right? So Ms. Womack had asked, will prom scheduled for May 29th or graduation be canceled? Will kids be prepared for Regents exams after being home so long? So the first part of your question, Mary, we don't know how long school will be closed. The Governor likes to determine that every two weeks. If we happen to be closed past May 29th, which I'm hoping we won't, I will do, I promise you, I will do everything in my power to make sure that our children have that milestone. I've asked the advisors to call the venue and see if there's additional dates. If we have to have prom in July, we'll have prom in July. They deserve that milestone in their education. Same thing for graduation. In my mind, it won't be canceled. It will just be postponed. As for Regents exams, teachers are moving forward with content next week, in which they will, it'll be new content for Regents exams. But the Board of Regents is slated to meet Monday of Tuesday of next week, and they're with the Chancellor and the Interim Commissioner, and that it is a regulatory reform meeting, so Regents is an item that they're gonna discuss. As always, I try to be as transparent with my families as soon as I get confirmation. As soon as I hear something and it's confirmed, I will, I promise I will share it with the Board and with the community.
Thank you. Thanks to everybody who worked on making this meeting possible in our new world, where everything's done from our homes and videos. And thanks, everybody, for your hard work every day. If any teachers or parents are listening, hang in there. We'll all get through it. Okay, motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Before I second it, I want to thank my sidekick, Jeff Miller. Otherwise, this old guy would not be on here. And I second the motion.
And I'd like to second Don doing a great job of adjusting to his new life. All in favor?
Proud of your commitment.
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, everyone. Stay well.
Bye.
Bye-bye.